Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for today. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counsel President Beggs.
Here.
Counsel President F. Carter.
If she said my name, present.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. So we don't have a meeting next week, so there's no briefing session. But there -- we do know.
President Stitt.
Madam Clerk, on special consideration, we're not going to do that tonight, but do we need to take action to take it off the agenda? Or is it -- I can't tell. It's great. Okay.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All right. Special consideration number one is removed. All right. Under emergency ordinances. Ordinance 36259, collective bargaining. I circulated a draft this morning. And then I circulated at 1:02 a substitute that included some language for Councilmember Bingle. And I would like to move for it, but I think we technically have to suspend the rules because I circulated after 1:00. So is there a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of considering a substitution?
So moved.
All right, so I'll second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion about suspending the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
You're abstaining?
I like to get to a deferral process, so -- because we just got this.
Are you just not open to a friendly amendment for?
We do a friendly amendment.
I don't know.
Well, I think we're just suspending the rules right now.
Okay, we're suspending.
Yeah, we're not getting to the marriage yet.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Who's voting no?
I voted no.
Councilmember Bingle voted no on suspending the rules.
So you don't want your?
I don't want to suspend the rules.
You don't want your?
Because we can't put your thing in.
No, I understand what it means. Yeah, I don't want to suspend the rules.
So you don't want your thing in?
Okay.
I don't want to suspend the rules.
He doesn't want -- he's clear. You guys can finish this later. Okay.
What did Councilmember Cathcart vote?
I voted nay.
Okay. So we've got two nays. And we have four ayes. But Councilmember Wilkerson.
I'm abstaining, but if.
But I don't know that you have a basis for abstaining.
From suspending the rules.
It's just suspending the rules.
Not from adding to the agenda.
So there's no changes? We're not adding anything different if he doesn't want his included?
Well.
I'll vote to suspend the rules. Yes. I'll vote yes.
All right. Rules are suspended. And I'm looking for a motion to substitute the version that I circulated a little after 1:00 p.m. today.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion about that substitution? And I know Councilmember Cathcart might have a motion as well.
But I'm -- okay, I do have a question.
Yep.
So the one that you circulated had substitutions by Councilmember Bingle.
Instead of it being somebody appointed by the council president, it would be somebody appointed by the majority of the city council. That was the change.
Oh, okay.
It was just clarifying that the council president would make the designation subject to the majority of council saying that we disagree with you.
Yeah.
It was just a small change.
Yeah.
At his request.
That's the one we're talking about, is the substituted one.
But it's the substituted that included that extra language. It was -- I circulated one that had lots of changes this morning. And then just after 1:00, I circulated that had all those same changes plus one line about majority of council gets to decide if there's a conflict between the council president.
Okay.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of substituting indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're -- all those opposed, nay?
Aye.
Okay. Were you a nay?
I said aye.
You said aye. Okay.
Just keeping you on your toes.
You are having fun with me at my expense, but that's all right. I'm glad. All right. Councilmember Cathcart, I know you circulated a version as well, so I want to make sure that you had a chance to be heard on that.
Yes, thank you. And yes, I did circulate a version earlier today that made a few changes that I thought kind of improved upon the proposal. But in the last 30 minutes or so, in talking with our contracted attorney, John Henry, he's just -- he pointed out that there just remains a number of questions overall with the overall ordinance, including some of the changes that I made to it. They all may have some legal issues that would, I think, need some additional analysis. And so I'm going to withdraw my proposed amendments. And instead, I'm going to make a motion that we defer for a week so that we can get some additional legal feedback on this proposal. Well, I guess two weeks because we don't meet next week.
Okay. So that -- and it would be an appropriate time to make that motion. So you're making a motion to defer for two weeks?
Second.
Yes.
He said one, but he corrected two because we don't have a meeting next week.
Okay. So my -- can I ask a question of how does that impact how we're going to -- the bargaining for the Guild?
It just means that a council member wouldn't -- it would slow down when a council staff person could be at the bargaining session.
All right. But we could, if and when it passed, then we could have somebody start going.
Yeah. Yeah. And my only observation is that we've proposed this months ago, and we had a request from the administration to delay so they could give us feedback. And so I feel like we're getting feedback on the last day. So I -- so I'm opposed to it. I don't -- and they've had plenty of time to give us legal memos or whatever it is that they wanted to give us, and they haven't given us anything. They have not been shy about giving us legal memos unasked on other aspects. But Councilmember Cathcart?
No, I don't disagree. I would love -- in fact, that would be my request if we were to defer, would be that this week we would get a memo that would lay out a number of their what-if concerns, which is what it is. There's a lot of just untested stuff, is what was pointed out to me. And I just think we should just kind of have a better idea of if there are potential issues with perk or other things. And just know that upfront. I mean, I like -- conceptually, I like the idea of having council in these meetings because obviously I like as much transparency as possible, and I like public knowing what's going on. Although we have council that not be able to share with them what's going on, but as their representative, we would know. But there are a number of questions regarding how that affects the ultimate outcomes, whether it's one council member or multiple. It may affect how that affects how council has to consider this. And I just think we should have all those what-ifs laid out, and I would like that in a memo this week. We can read through it, disagree or agree, and then adopt what we're going to adopt. But I would just like the time to get that feedback.
Councilmember Stratton?
So if we deferred it, and you said two weeks, could we say to -- because I understand the frustration, right? We don't hear -- we ask for the opinion back, and we don't hear anything until two days before, and then it clogs everything up, and then they ask us to wait three more weeks to bring it. We're sick of that. I mean, I'm tired of it. So I mean, can we enforce that and say that we have got to have their changes in one week? Or how -- will this allow them to just continue on and on like they have in other issues?
Can he put that in his motion?
Well, we can't direct staff.
But they're our attorneys.
I know, and that's been a challenging situation lately.
Maybe if we say it publicly, that if we don't see something, then it is frustrating.
Councilmembers Oppone and Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah. Can I ask Mr. Piccolo a question since he's here representing the administration?
Yeah.
Mr. Piccolo, I was just wondering if you had some insight into this repeated occurrence that we have of where legal will come to us hours before something's under consideration and telling us to delay and defer? And if we have any options as to try to expedite that process in general?
Well, I don't have any specific information to share. I know this ordinance has been around for a little bit, and I know there's been legal concerns about a member of the council or a representative from the council participating in the labor negotiations. I'm not sure what discussions have taken place with council members from the administration. I also know that Mr. Henry has been contacted. He was included on the most recent emails. So there may be some communication coming back from him this week. But I think your motion would be a deferral for two weeks on the condition that -- once you defer it, since there's no meeting next week, it's a two-week continuance. You can't really change that. So if there was not a meeting next week, then you could put the condition that it'll be deferred for two weeks as long as you get a memo this week, give you a chance to review that information. But with no meeting next week, it's kind of a moot point.
And to follow up, I guess, is there anything that we can do to help this process of communication with legal?
Well, I can certainly contact the city attorney, Mr. Smithson, and Johnny Perkins, and let them know. I think they already do know. I think the emails have been circulated and read.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bingle?
So I'd be good with the deferral, not necessarily because of the issues that we've talked about, but also when we, you know, only get, you know, a day to review it ourselves. I mean, sometimes, you know, I would just like to be able to process it a little bit more. But we don't necessarily have to defer here right now, right? We have another session coming up. And so if we wanted to contact the administration and say, hey, can you commit to this? And if they say yes, then we could defer. We don't necessarily have to do it right now.
That's true.
We could say we defer it for final vote on the 27th because we don't meet next week, right?
We can. He's saying we don't have to defer it until 6:00.
Right now, right.
Because we can see if -- are they going to do something?
Are they willing to do what we're asking them to do?
They're going to post a $10,000 bond, say.
I want a signature or something.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if they -- and on one of the other issues we recently worked with them on, we asked them, hey, would you do this this week? And they did. And so if we gave them the opportunity and asked, could you do this in a week? And they agreed to that, then we could defer later.
And I'm -- because I'm sponsoring this bill, I'm going to be more partisan than just the person doing the gavel. But I'm -- two things. One, there was -- there's not a provision for a city council member to sit in on these. I just want to make that clear because I know that was a concern. We specifically said no. It's just an observer. And it's not someone who's participating. It's just an observer. So there's just -- it's just a communications channel that we have been sorely missing in these processes. So I mean, I'm -- I don't know whether I'll have the votes or not, but I want to go ahead, vote on it. And then if we get a really -- a legal opinion that is very concerning in the next two weeks, you know, it doesn't go into effect for a month or something like that. So we have time that we can amend it if we need to do it. But I would rather put the pressure on that way since it hasn't been important enough to do anything about now, clearly objectively. It hasn't been. So if there is now a new thing, it's like, okay, go ahead, do your thing, and let us know, and of course, we'll listen to it. Councilmember Bingle?
And I hear what you're saying. I think since this was first proposed, and I don't know if anybody would agree, but I feel like the administration has been better in that way, giving us updates before moving on, in the spirit of what this ordinance would be asking.
It's been two months. They haven't responded.
He's talking about negotiations in general.
Yeah.
She's talking about this ordinance. Although, we did find out there was a whole other negotiation going on that we didn't know about just recently. They have requested a couple executive sessions, which we gave them, and then they said they couldn't do it then. So we're still trying to get an executive session to hear about that.
And I don't mind things like this going into code. I think it's easier for everybody involved when it's very clean and plain. And so that's not it for me. Again, my reason for the deferral is just for me to be able to process this. That's it.
So can I just ask, our bargaining units, they're informed of this, and we've talked to them, and as of this, they don't have problems with?
Well, no. So I think I put it in the email, but so Local 29 is the one that suggested these -- and again, the same on the bargaining units. They asked months ago for plenty of time to come to us, and then they came to us really relatively recently. But Local 29 is the one that suggested the council staff observer as a way to bridge. And then the police guild suggested an annual meeting with the OPOC on police issues rather than tying it to the start of a negotiation. And we put those in. My understanding from talking to the labor representative is MMP was fine with it. Local 29 is fine. Police guild liked the part about the OPOC, but they're in general opposed to any change. And Local 270 was definitely opposed to it. I did not talk to lieutenants and captains in police, or Sappho from Fire, or the prosecutor. There's other unions that aren't usually the major ones we deal with. So I would say, to be fair, it's mixed depending on the bargaining unit.
Yeah.
Councilmember Oppone?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Council President Beggs about not deferring. There's always time to amend if needed. That just seems like a delay tactic from the administration when we can keep moving it forward. And I like how he framed it as it puts the onus on them to come back to us with an amended version if they think we need to have an amended version.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah. And just to clarify, it wouldn't be a delayed tactic from the administration because it's not the administration requesting this. It's Councilmember Cathcart and myself requesting this. So it's not the administration. There's us doing it.
Well, they've requested it as well.
They request.
Oh, I believe it. Yeah, that's not our reasoning for doing it.
Yeah. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, to be clear, nobody in the administration has asked me to defer this. So that's kind of a weird thing to bring up out of nowhere. So I don't know where that's coming from. But no, this is me getting feedback from our attorney, and the only one from council, by the way, in the meeting, getting this feedback, specifically saying that if we have a -- you know, again, it's a gray area, untested, but we just don't know. And one of the concerns is if there's a person there, whether they're a council member or just from council, but they're from council, that it creates this inherent bias where we basically are forced to adopt whatever comes out of those negotiations. As an independently elected person, I have no interest in doing anything that's going to force me to vote in any particular way. So like, if that's going to be the outcome, it's a nonstarter for me, but I need some more details on that. And that's why I want the defer. So if you guys are willing to take that risk, I mean, that's fine. It's your choice. I would like the time to know that we're not making bad decisions.
Councilmember Kinnear?
And I know you believe that it's coming from you to ask for the deferral. However, we did get -- I got -- I don't know if you got it too. Two of us got a request to hold off because there were concerns, and this is from administration. They didn't ask for a deferral. They said they had concerns and they wanted to discuss. So that's in effect, you know, stop, let us talk about this. And we've had so much time to do this. It seems so very last minute. And I don't think we should. I think we should go ahead, and let's make those changes before the meeting on the 27th. I appreciate, though, what you're saying, that you want to make sure that we're not stepping into the middle of something and being thorough. I get that. I understand that. I appreciate that. This has just been going on for too long, and I just want to get it. Let's just settle it.
Did you share that email with us? No.
Okay.
Councilmember Bingle?
And one last quick thing is, you know, in the same way that we're frustrated, we get information last minute from people who have commentary on it. In that same vein, when we don't get the revised version until, you know, last minute, you know, 1:00, I mean, you know, I'm not saying that's necessarily what happened here, but when we get it and we don't have a lot of time to process it, that's the same spirit of that where, you know, we would like some time to process -- and by we, I mean myself. I would like some time to process the changes that have been made.
The difference being that as a council, we're the policymaking body. And it seems to me when administration inserts themselves in that same way, they're stepping out of their administrative role and becoming the policy people as well.
Yeah. And I'm not speaking to them. I'm saying when I get an updated version, you know, I have to vote on it that same day. That, to me, doesn't give me enough time to.
And this version, I think, only had one sentence or two-sentence changes.
No, there was -- but earlier in the day, there was -- yeah. And just to be clear, the reason that that was was because the feedback didn't come from people until -- and then once I got it, I'm like, all right, great, we'll update it.
Yeah, and I'm not placing blame on anybody because, again, the timeline is what it is. You get that feedback, you try to insert that to make something better, and then give it to us. And there's nothing wrong with that. It's just now, without a deferral, we have, you know, seven hours to think about something. That's it.
I didn't get anything.
All right. So motion is on the table to defer until the 27th?
I second it.
And it was seconded? It's been discussed? All those in favor of deferring for two weeks indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. All right. So for now, it is not deferred, but there can be further discussions before 6:00.
So we don't meet next week? Okay.
Okay. And then the other, and I'm forgetting the number of the ordinance.
I may not go to that.
Which is the landlord tenant ordinance circulated.
36330.
Okay, 36330.
That's -- it's not on there.
Okay. And again, this one has gone back and forth with multiple versions and two trips -- well, three trips to city legal, actually. So this version is in response to the last red line comments version from city legal that we got at the end of last week. And I circulated it today. And Councilmembers Stratton and I are the sponsors, and we are recommending that we substitute it as the placeholder for the vote on the 27th so that the public can start providing feedback over the next two weeks. I imagine that there could be further changes before there's a vote, just because we're going to get feedback. But I'm looking for a motion to substitute the version I circulated earlier today.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Spied.
Any discussion on the substitution?
So I just want to be clear that this, if this passes, this will be the ordinance that we'll be working from for any changes because Councilmember Cathcart and I have not had a chance to meet together. I think we're planned to meet tomorrow so we can talk about this. And if we need any changes, then we can move forward with that process.
Councilmember Cathcart, is your hand still raised? I can't tell if it's a new raise or continued raise. Yeah.
Yeah. I just agree with this. I don't think. I don't think this should even be considered today. There has been zero ability to build any consensus, in my opinion. In fact, we had to wait all of last week, so Legal could work on your version, and I haven't had any time to get anything back from Legal yet to be able to propose an alternative today. And so I just think this is wrong, I think it's a bad faith effort, and I'm, I'm opposed to it, and it's just unfortunate that this is sort of how this process is concluding. Here we are.
All right. Any other commentary on the motion to substitute?
Michael, that would still give us two weeks for input, because we're still trying to stay to that 27th deadline. It would be out there where the public could get to it, could look it up, and we can respond to let people know, you know, the new version and get it sent out. I know it's not optimal, but considering the 27th...
If this passes tonight, then, then the votes are there, it's, it's open, so there's no more discussion.
Councilmembers Oppone?
Council President questioned, if this were not added to the agenda now, then the public would not have a chance to see an ordinance before the vote in two weeks, unless we added it. There, there's no other chance, there's no other opportunity, is that correct?
Right.
Unless we move the date.
Unless we move the date of the final. So this is the only chance for the public to actually see any ordinance to work off of.
As something that's being proposed to be voted on, I mean, anyone can circulate anything anytime, so, but, yeah.
But it would not be on the published, the agenda.
Yeah.
So I'll just, for that reason, I support this, because I think it's important for the public to see a working document. We've been talking about how important that transparency is, and if we weren't to add it today, we would either have to delay our vote, which we've also promised we would be voting on in two weeks, so if we don't delay that vote, then they would have nothing except for what was brought forward on the day of the vote, which I think goes against transparency. So for that reason, I would be supporting adding this to the agenda.
And Councilmember Cathcart, I will say that there are, including myself, a couple council members that are concerned and have questions about the per-door charge, per-door fee. So I, I mean, in my mind, that's still up in the air and something that we should be, you know, talking back and forth about. So I just want you to know in good faith, I'm willing to get this on the agenda so it can get out there to the public, public can look it up, so there's no surprises, but that I do have a couple concerns that I think you and I need to sit down and talk about.
All right. Unless there's any further discussion, all those in favor of substituting indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, that's five to two, it's substituted, and we'll be getting the word out on that. I've asked Ms. Uncle Tretis email a copy to Mr. Quirker and Ms. Anderson first at the same time, so you guys should be getting that, but we'll have it available for everyone hopefully soon. Are there any other agenda issues for tonight's agenda? All right. Then with that, we are adjourned until 6:00 p.m.
Whoa.
Except you've got some interviews, some of you.
Thanks for using WebEx. Visit our website.